Here.
Mr. Lance.
Here.
Mr. Moss.
Here.
Mr. Cybert.
Here.
Ms. Seymour is here, she'll be right back in. And Mr. Picasso.
Here.
Ms. Jordan is here.
You have seven members present.
Thank you. I'm going to move forward with the first item on our agenda, and that is discussion of potential financing options for our roads.
Thank you, Madam President. On May 5th, the council spent four hours evaluating, having rather extensive discussion on roads. We had both HRC and OHLM, and our average Pacer rating is 4.6. Tonight, to continue with that conversation, we've asked Mike McGee, CEO from Miller Canfield, to join us, as well as Steve Mitchell for Mitchell Research and Communications. The discussion we'd like to have with Mr. McGee is, what may our financing options be available? And I've asked Mr. Mitchell to join us, that if there's a collective will of this body, then we perhaps formally engage Mr. Mitchell to do some polling or research as to where the community is on this issue.
Does he even want Mr. McGee?
I'd like to start with Mr. McGee.
Sure.
I know Mr. McGee spoke with Sue, our city attorney, Thursday or Friday last week. They had a conversation.
Well, I thought you said Frank.
Frank, okay.
Yeah.
You're very changeable.
Yeah.
Michael, you're still admitting you mean that it's only for Southfield.
And you should bring it forward.
Madam President, and for the record, my name is Mike McGee. I'm a public finance attorney with Miller Canfield, 150 West Jefferson Avenue, Detroit, Michigan, 48226. On the subject of street and road improvements, there are, as the council knows, typically three means by which road financing can be done. I think one of those will not be appropriate, but I'll just mention it for completeness. Now, the three means are typically to either finance or borrow against a city's Act 51 monies. Candidly, that's not done very much anymore, of course, because those monies are typically completely used up for road maintenance, and very often are even insufficient for that purpose. But as I say, I mention it for completeness. The other two means involve either providing for a dedicated millage for road improvements. Typically, that's done, in the case of the city, through a charter amendment. And the other option is to vote, seek voter approval for borrowed money to pay for the project. In the case of the vote for straight millage, the principal constraint that applies there is the city, as you all know, is limited by state law in how much it may levy under its charter and for these purposes. And the city, when it last approached the electors for approval for the millage increase a couple of years ago, largely for public safety, the city used up a substantial amount of the capacity that it has to vote those millages. There's still, based on our rough evaluation, a little bit less than two mills available for that purpose, but no more than that. So to the extent that the council determines to select a project option which would cost more than that, you'd be stuck with the limitation on the operating millage. The other approach, excuse me, the other approach is to take to the voters a request to authorize the borrowing of a fixed amount of money to cover the cost of the project in one or more series in over a period of years, if that would be the council's judgment. That carries with it, if approved by the voters, the authority to levy a millage to pay for that debt. That is outside of the charter limitations, and for that reason, in these days when so many folks are pressed up against the charter limitation, that's a reasonably common way of paying for road improvements. So, big picture, those are the principal options. I could get into whatever detail the council likes, but one of that calls now and open it up for any questions you might have, or if there's anything else I can cover.
Well, I know I talked to Steve a little bit, but I think the way the administration had kind of viewed this was, you know, so much every year for perhaps the next 10 years to do projects. So a bond issue would get you one lump sum upfront unless you did a different series, correct?
Exactly right. Normally, what you would do is you would seek authorization for the full amount that the city expects it would need for the project over a period of time. But that does not require the city in any one year or ever, for that matter, to borrow that money. It's an authorization. It basically creates a borrowing capacity. How that capacity is accessed can be tied to the construction season for the project. And you'll see this, it's actually quite frequent for large construction projects of the kind that you're talking about. It's fairly common on the school side, because they'll typically have projects that might run over more than one construction season. And typically, what you do is you figure out what, how much can be done in the construction season. Either you try to borrow that amount, or if you borrow more than that, let's say to cover two construction seasons, the financial advisors will do some arithmetic to balance out, well, what's the cost of carrying the interest of the money you borrowed versus what are you going to earn on those funds between the time when you borrow them and when you're actually going to spend them? And you can get a solution as to how frequently you should borrow. But in general, you're exactly right. You basically would ask voter approval for a full amount of what you would expect the project to cost, and then it's up to the council and to the city's financial advisors to determine how frequently would some of that money have to be drawn down and paid for whatever's next in the phasing.
Council, do you have any questions at this point?
Not necessarily a question for anybody, but actually the people at the table. Mr. Picasso brought up at our last meeting about having some sort of legislative meeting with the key players about, you know, the different areas of road funding and really kind of have an expansive discussion on it. And so I talked to Mr. Zorn a little bit about that last week. I was wondering, do we want to do that as kind of a bigger meeting chaired by not legislative committee, but by council president, and have different of the players at the table and set an agenda and have that discussion with our different legislative entities? Or would you rather see that come from the committee with certain points that we bring back to council?
At this point, we're sort of under time restraint in terms of getting everything approved, the ballot, our language approved. So I would think that this body can make that decision at the moment.
Sure.
Going to another committee and coming back.
That's okay.
Madam Chair, I saw that what we should first do, I was reading, I wondered, somebody went for a bond issue or something, millage for roads, and was approved. But I think it would be worth a thought to have Steve do a survey first, so that we know what the feeling is, because when we last spoke, we talked about what would it cost our residents, I think we put in $3.20, oh, $3.50 a year?
The administration would like to see the amount, we'd like to see something generate an additional $8 million.
Per year?
Per year. So, and eight million dollars per year. So at a tax base of 2.25 billion, we need to probably be around three and a half mills. If you got a house with a, I don't know, a rent, $150,000 SEV, taxable SEV, for seventy-five...
Two and a quarter?
Seventy-five thousand times three and a quarter.
We were talking two and a quarter?
Two and a quarter.
Something like that.
So about, on a daily basis, about 75 cents a day, less than a cup of coffee.
Yeah, but, you know, we're at 20, 23 mills today. And, you know, from an economic development standpoint, and also residents here with the amount of money they have as far as disposable income, we're kind of lowering the income level, I don't know if I can tell you. And my concern is how big the debt would be to burden them with another $300, maybe $300 more a year, you know, maybe 75 cents a day. But, you know, by the time, the gasoline just went up to 3.88 now, you know, and who knows, like, how they put summer fuel in, it may be a four and a quarter. Who knows? But they're going to happen, and then we're going to have problems in Syria and all over Iran, you know, who knows what's going to happen? There was a big article today in the New York Street Journal about how much fewer barrels are coming from each country. And if we start shipping instead of keeping it in, you know, we're looking at maybe a four, four and a quarter a gallon of gasoline. So I guess I'm trying to put it in a, in a way that it would not be that much of a burden for our residents. Yes, the roads are bad, there's no doubt about that. And of course, the state is going to do nothing. The last thing I read, they broke with 15 and 16, so I don't think they can even add up there. So, I just, before, I put that pressure on our residents and businesses, I'd like to hear from Steve and let him do a survey to see what is out there. If they feel that, you know, the roads are bad enough that they've got to get them fixed in long term, and we take the money over a period of time as opposed to all at once, you know, as projects come forward, and we have, for example, up to 10 million or 20 million, whatever that figure is, we take just what we needed, the 8 million a year, we have only so much work you can do during the construction season, and we do it that way, which, you know, would change how much they would be, you know, I don't know what the debt would be if you handle it that way. Michael's sitting there a little bit. Mike, maybe answer me, Mr. McGee, I guess now. I mean, when you, if you were saying, go to the, up to 10 million dollars, or about to 10 million, and you only use it in interim, sorry, as the construction season permits, what is the burden? Do we collect the money on the full amount?
No. You only collect the money on the amount that's actually been borrowed.
Okay.
Which gives you the ability to control what that levy is going to be. The other variable is what are the costs of the borrowed funds, what's the interest rate? So one of the advantages of being able to stage this and not have to borrow the full amount is, if as, as the program develops, the interest rates are either higher or lower than expectations, you can adjust based on what the market conditions are right then. If the interest rates are, are higher, and so that would make the millage burden more heavy, you can delay or reduce the amount of borrowing to fit within the millage target. If the other, if it happens the other way, and rates are lower than what are projected, you have the ability to, you know, keep the rates, keep the millage rate so much lower or to do a little bit more project. That would be a judgment the council could make at the time.
Is the market for municipal bonds now? Is it, what's the other?
I would say generally, the market's very favorable to municipal bonds. One reason is because the general economic conditions, I don't have to tell everyone in the room, are still marked by a pretty slow economy. So there does not, as of yet, appear to be any significant upward pressure on interest rates, number one. Number two, municipal borrowing over the whole country is down a little bit. In part, that's because local governments are having to be much more cautious and prudent about their borrowing plans. So the municipal market is supply and demand, just like anything else. There's still a demand on the part of bond purchasers to buy bonds. There aren't as many in the market that's having the effect of bidding up the price to the purchaser, which to this body means the interest rate comes down. So municipal interest rates, I think I've been saying this almost as long as I've been coming out here, I think, and we've seen low, low rates, and we continue to be in a historically very low interest rate environment.
Let me ask you then, if a question. If we look at the amount for construction for season, then what would that number be to the residents and to the business community? In other words, it could be 300 some, 320?
Wouldn't you want to get authorization, though, for your total? I mean, you wouldn't want to go to a ballot question every year with, say, $8 million, right? And you could get one authorization, borrow up to?
Yeah, well, that's what I'm talking about, you know.
And a bond can eat into that 8 million, too.
Sure.
So, a bond would give us, what, if we, 8 million in one series, what would that give us to work with?
Yeah. Well, that's what I'd like to, you know, I'd like to have some volunteers to look at, you know, whatever we, council feels like doing, you know, whatever the amount, I'd like to see if you carry it out, you spread, and let's see what it looks like. I mean, that's my thought.
And Mr. Lance?
I have a thought. I think everybody is going to say I'm crazy. I asked a, I asked a question last week, and I didn't get an answer. We have departments that have a lot of money. The water department has a lot of money in their cash. Does anybody know?
At the end of last year, about 45 million.
Thank you. Then what other department works the same way that has money? Parks and Rec or the water department, the other one?
Parks and Rec has a fund balance, but it, that money is for Parks and Rec, same as the library.
Okay.
They both have a refund balance.
All right. Now you're, now you're going to say I'm crazy. Why not borrow in-house, borrow some of the money from there, the 8 million and 10 million, and not run a bond, not to borrow money outside, so we have to pay interest, we raise the people's taxes and hurt the people? We have the money already, why can't we use it?
Those are dedicated funds.
The laws can change.
No.
We can change it, and not break the, that department, not break the law of the law, et cetera.
You do have an internal service fund, the LRF fund, would take this conversation 8 million in it.
Huh?
But you do have an internal service fund, the LRF, and the LRF throughout history has loaned money to the golf courses, and we are charging them interest on that money.
Okay.
But, so, I'm still going to need a millage, though.
Why?
There's something to pay that payment back each year. And so, you know, if there was one year we were able to...
But the millage wouldn't be as big as the millage you have to...
You would, you would still need, you would still need a millage to replenish the source. Otherwise, you're going to be exhausted in one year.
Okay. You can, you can replenish it over a period of years, X amount of years, just like the bond. And it'll be cheaper than paying interest outside.
I think the total, if you were looking at $8 million a year...
Year for 10 years.
Times 10 years, you're looking at $80 million. That's what we need to get those Pacer ratings up, Greg. So that's the kind of number.
So you borrow some and have a lesser of the village.
But we still got to pay the borrowed funds back, or they will be exhausted in one year.
But you're not going to borrow the same amount of money. You borrow much less, and maybe attach us and pay that. We can, we can change things. Just thought, think about it. Then you won't have to go to the people, and we won't be able to pay the mortgages again.
I don't know if anyone, yesterday's prepress was a story about road spending per capita on Great Lakes. Michigan was debt, was 50 about 50 states. Bring the article in, and the prepress article didn't identify the study, and I was a little frustrated that I couldn't pull up a full study. Having said that, I know firsthand the calls we will get, from when a homeowner gets that escrow announcement that their home that's worth 100,000, 50,000 in taxable value, with their taxes going up, 150 dollars a year. And the escrow company says, in order to keep the same escrow, you need to pay an extra... I know those calls because we get them. When we got them, with the last one, it's increased by enough, people are saying... But I think that's why we asked Mr. Mitchell to join us, is to find out where our, the residents are.
You're laying up the same thing. Bond, the millage, and everything, it's the same thing, there's no changes.
And I'm more of the mindset, in order with the Pacer, the litigation is three and a half, three and a quarter, or three and a half rolls annually, we're generating the amount of money to make a significant difference in our roads over a 10-year period. It's not an investment.
Now you're moving away from the thought that I had, the money.
Let's talk about the money.
Could, could we do it that way? I know the roads got to be fixed, I know everything is sane, but maybe there's an easier way of doing it with the money. Everybody quiet, I know, I gave you a thought.
Well, one of the, as you're turning, you know, funds are dedicated, and when the dedication is not allowed, it's not allowed to use.
Lot of change, every day.
So where does somebody...
Maybe we can swing it, I don't know.
Okay, where you put it on the table?
I think the people would rather have something like that, and pay a lesser amount of money than a bond issue and all that, all what they have to go through, and attach to their mortgages, and maybe sleepwalking some more, you know.
All right, let's go to Mr. Frazier.
Yeah, if we miss the window to get it on this ballot, we can put it on next year's, next year's ballot. That would give us a little more time to figure out where we're at. We've already got more than enough to keep us busy this year. And if we go, here's, here's my thought. I would rather have success behind us, and then go to the people and say, this, we've already done this, but we need additional money to continue to fix the roads, and to do that, we need you to vote for a millage, for, so we can buy bonds, you know, so we can go out and get some bonds. But, right now, they, when we did the last millage, they did it on faith, that we were going to spend it on police and fire, and we did. But, you don't see them, you don't see any improvement. You see the continuation of what we always did, because we always had the police and fire protection. So our, our risk was, if we didn't have a millage, our police and fire protection would reduce. So they really, you know, they just maintained it, the level where it was at. I just think that, for me, if I saw a brand-new road, and then the city came to me and said, we really don't have any more money to finish the roads, but we will do, and we pledge that we're going to use any millage that we would get to continue to complete the roads, I'd be more prone to vote for a millage than I would not having any roads fixed, and have to go out and vote for, for millage, especially if, as Mr. Lance says, people are, you know, up against the wall already.
If you're going to vote for a millage, you vote for the bonds, it'll be the same thing. You're not changing, you're not thinking.
Well, we got to have millages in our favor, don't we?
I know, I know.
There could be some merit in doing this next, next year in the land, offer this thought. We know right now Royal Road has a ballot question planned for this November.
They are exploring it right now.
They're exploring it. Primeton Hills is going through the same method. Both communities are going through the same Pacer rating. There's an article in today's London Central about Royal Road, they're looking at two and a quarter mill. We need to, staff needs to do some footwork and see if they already have an existing millage. I think they had one from the early 90s, that where they did Main Street, and they have been limited. Primeton Hills is evaluating, there's, I think, someone in this room knows, Grand Rapids just raised their income tax, and they put together a 30-year, very elaborate, huge billions of dollars of investment. I'll also offer this, that I think where the legislature is, I mean, a week ago, we thought they were going to be putting in 500 million, 500 million from the state, assuming the same distribution would bring an additional 1.5 million to Southfield. The governor, for the last three years, has asked for 1.5 billion. That will bring into Southfield, if that were to ever happen, an additional 4.5 million. Even with that number, we're still 3.5 billion short of what we know we need to do to do this job consistently, a good, every-year investment in our roads for long-term maintenance and preventing. So I, I think that if, you know, I, I think the ideal date would have been, had we been prepared to put this question to the voters in February, after the harsh winter we had, I think it would have been a slam dunk.
I'm not, you know, I'm not averse, I just tried to throw another ounce in it. But as Mr. Picasso said, maybe we need to find out what people say. I mean, those are the ones who pay the bills.
That's why we asked Mr. Mitchell to join us tonight. You don't have to step up after, we have a team of people to weigh in. Mr. Cybert?
I agree with what Fred just said, and that was what I was going to say. I think if we had put this, we talked about this last year, I don't want, I was chairing the meetings last year, Jim said we're not ready to go forward with this, we don't have the road studies or the finances. But after this, and if we had gone last year, I think we probably wouldn't have passed. But on things like this, there has to be, maybe it's not a good analogy, but people have to, you know, have to see blood. In other words, get people's attention. And I, I think after the winter we've experienced, and look at every single meeting that I think we've had for the last four or five months, we've talked about roads. Every televised meeting has roads that have come up. I, I think we're ready to go out and ask for something, and I think it would pass, myself. I think people are, we're really in a crisis. And when you, when you look at the, just, forget the mile roads and the half-mile roads for now, you just go neighborhood to neighborhood. We did a lot of roads in Southfield, blacktop roads, in the 90s. It's not 20, 20, 25 years since these roads were done. They're in terrible shape in the neighborhoods. And the only way they're going to get paid for is either special assessment or, or bond. I don't really favor waiting any longer, myself, because if we have another winter like we just had, it's just going to get worse and more expensive. And that's what we, you know, that's what our study told us. It's only going to get more expensive, and they're not going to get better, they're not going to fix themselves. So, I don't know about timing, on the August ballot, if it could be done by then, I don't, I don't know.
Quickly look at November.
Yeah. But I hear what you're saying, Mr. Frazier, too, that...
Another, another option.
Yeah. But it, you know, it would be great to have approval either in August or November, so that we could start doing something by next construction season. And we really, we really have to start addressing neighborhood streets, they're, they're falling apart. Thank you.
Mr. Moss? Yeah, I would say if you take the temperature of the city of Southfield, and we'll find out soon, I think that overwhelmingly this would pass. The city that obviously voted, voted to have a police and fire millage increase with tremendous support, I think even meek amount of support for a road millage would still be over 50%. So I'm, I really do think that the temperature... So I really do think that the temperature of the city of Southfield says that we're ready to do this. However, when we have a discussion further, I don't know if there's a plan for another breakout session to talk about this as it goes forward, we really do need to loop in our lobbyists, because there's, just as Fred said, there's so much going on in Lansing, that, you know, there's even discussion of a future, you know, putting up a vote to the people to increase the sales tax and have that extra percent come back. And it would, we don't want to be putting up vote after vote, and one of, either the city fails, or the statewide vote fails, because it just could be voter fatigue, well, I just voted to increase funding for roads, why am I doing it again? So we really need to be really in sync with whatever happens in Lansing, to make sure that, you know, we're not duplicating efforts or even, you know, having more pain at, you know, in the pocketbooks of Southfield residents, if they're voting on a potential statewide sales tax increase to go to roads, or if they're voting on a city bond to go to roads. So whatever future discussion needs to loop in, builds that, to make sure we're all checking each other, to make sure we're not giving our voters too much fatigue at the ballot. But, from my conversations with residents throughout the entire city, that's the number one issue, we all know it, and I'm convinced that Southfielders would support it. But not Evergreen in between twelve thirty.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Um, I think what Jeremy said, timing is everything. Absolutely, timing is everything. Within, just the past few days, I have had three residents, congregation just running into residents, and pleasantries, and then roads. That's, you know, that's the first topic. And once I tell them, explain to them, they can't understand why we're not fixing the roads, they just can't help. Explain it in our financial situation, where our money goes, which roads belong to who, which ones we're responsible for, part, some of the reasons about why the roads are bad, and they didn't know all that stuff. So I think, if you want this to be successful, I think we have to do an education campaign, because people don't understand which roads we're responsible for, and also what's causing this. It isn't all bad roads or bad patching, it's, a lot of it's so endless underneath, the water, the type we have, we have. So once, and I had it just before I came, it's about, just before four o'clock, a couple hours here. They get it once you explain it to them, but they won't get it if we don't explain it and take the time to educate the people. Then I think they'll be willing, because they can understand, why aren't you fixing the roads? Why aren't we fixing the roads? And once you get around the corner, then they get it. So if you want to be successful, as you generally agree, you gotta let them know what it is, why it is, so they understand. Otherwise, okay, we've got money, what's wrong? No, we don't got money, you know? I think that education part is key to really getting this to pass.
I'm trying to tie this off, yes. We are one of the hardest task communities in Oakland. We do go out for a bond, and our residents pay. I am extremely concerned about raising our taxes for a bond. Now, with that being said, we need to fix the roads. So, the bond, when we asked for the increase in the millage, we did not have a spot for it. If we, to me, the only way that I would feel comfortable telling them is that, we're going to do this for what, five years, ten years, and then it's going away? Or they have, because of the amount of money that this will raise for roads will not be something we will need forever unless you're going to start stacking money up. The other, the other concern I have is that the special assessment, which so many other communities do, I really want to explore that, I don't feel that we are. There, in, I was just talking, I was with some community leaders from West Oakland, and there was a neighborhood that would not vote for the special assessment, and their roads were falling apart. That's some ownership in the game, that some saying, just patch it up, we don't want to pay for it now, but that's driven by the community, by the owners of that problem. It's different from us saying that we don't have the money for. Special assessment, to me, is a short time, it is, I got skin in the game, and I see it. The other thing I wanted to look at, when you talk about special assessment, some communities do the entire assessment to the resident. We do have X amount of money in the budget, they're waiting for us to do a percentage, and then the resident has to do it. It could be sixty, forty, it could be fifty, fifty. I want answers to that. What would that look like, and can we do it that way? Because I would, you know, I know I'm just one resident, but when you take the amount of streets that I have to pay for, and the city does have money, I voted in that last millage for a percentage of it to be for roads, it was a small percentage of that. But the special assessment piece, to me, and it's comparable to other communities' rights, not like we're pulling it out of the sky. Because the issue that Mr. Moss brought up is extremely important, because if we go out and we get this millage, and then they vote for a sales tax, then other communities waited, and so now they have a sales tax, they're fixing their roads, here we are, our taxes are higher again. I think we need to be very strategic. It's easy to ask for a millage, it takes, it's a harder grind when we look at options. And then the other part of that is, is there a way that we could split this? So, face, like we're responsible for Evergreen Road. If we went for a bond, could it say it'll just be for residential streets? So residents, if you approve this bond, this money would be dedicated to residential streets. And then how much will we need to do that? And I would say, I would venture, that our existing funding could, I'm not sure, but then we would have the ability to fix the roads that we're responsible for. But I think there's some other options, instead of just saying, okay, both of us monitoring, this is what we have. And to me, a bond saying, we're only going to fix residential streets, if you approve this bond, this money is dedicated to all our residential streets, and then the existing millage that we have for roads and the funding will go for the main street. Now, I don't know if that number works, but those are the type things that I'm looking at, because I've lived through, now you're saying it's roads, I've lived through every other person, our taxes are too high, they're too high, they're too high. And we, you know, the economy gave us the break, because everyone's property values dropped, and their taxes went down, and they started breathing it in. When that goes back, this is going to be unbearable, because we are higher. And then, you know, this thing about, I can buy in every other community and get the same house for less taxes. We lived through that, that was a key. Not a comfortable period. And I'm, I'm really sensitive about saying, we're going to go again and say, let's take some more tax. I want to look at all these differences. Bearable.
Number one, to Councilman Moss, Jeremy, you know, some time ago, we went for physical stabilization bond financing, which needed legislation passage to do that, and I was just looking at the draft of the time it would take, that the council authorizes it, and they work on it at the legislative level, and lobbyists and all that. Started back in July, and if everything went forward smoothly, it'd be December before legislators could even enact it. So we do have a time limit on going for something, you know, from the legislators up in Lansing to make anything of a, a move, is what I'm trying to get at. Yes, to the November election, and, you know, as I was ready to vote last year for it, for bonds for roads, but, it's near here and there, but we have a November election, you're going to have to have plans and engineering, it's going to take time to do that. So, so we're not going to be breaking down right then, that, thinks about, whatever time that is, I don't know. And maybe it's going to have to go to Beards to get that net out. So, so when you start November, you're probably not going to even get started until April or May, HRC's here, unless you, you know, figure out way ahead of time what roads are going to get done and when, and who's going to decide if you get the money. And Mayor, you know, for years I've experienced, you know, sidewalk experience, and we just get, eat up so bad, but somebody has to pay for sidewalks assessment. And, and, I know roads are a different product, and, but, because, because of that, you know, I'd like to know how much, say, for example, a fifty-foot lot, you know, how much it would cost?
Yeah.
And then, I'd like to see, you know, how much assessment does a person pay for a sidewalk in relationship to a street? They got fifty foot wide, and they're assessing fifty foot of street versus sidewalk, just to give you some perspective of some dollars. And irrespective of, of what anything council decides tonight, I would sure like to get a survey. I mean, when you take the surveys, you know exactly what you're dealing with, and you know how to, even if it's a positive thing, how are you going to go forward from that? And, and so, I mean, all of us have been doing surveys for every little thing, so you know, why, why do we do surveys? You know, with the four or deaths, you still, you still have to do some things to make it happen. And so I would sure absolutely want to have a survey taken, that isn't going to cost much. Steve's going to give you a break, but anyway, but anyways, that's what I would like to do. And, and I agree with everybody around the table, I mean, I just came here, I just fell in bed, and, you know, I just put ball darts and tied, I ran down twelve mile road, county road, and, and that's not covered by city insurance, if I'd have done it on Evergreen, that, the business street, but anyway. But then I come down, coming here just now, I come down Central Park Boulevard, and right before the light down here, there's a hole that deep, and it's going down. And so we have serious holes, and, and from an economic development standpoint, business people going to work don't want to go to work and end up hauling a tow truck and getting an eight hundred dollar bill, you know, and say, you know, yeah, I went to work in Southfield, but, and, but, you know, so it hits the residents, but it also hits us from an economic development standpoint, and how we do our infrastructure. And so, I guess, I would like to see a survey of one entity, and that's the residents. I don't know if Steve does business or not, when he does surveys, I, I guess that's what he's going to ask, but nobody's going to entail that, I guess he would do anything we want, anyway, but, I just would like to see a survey before we go any further, I'd like to see it on November if we decide to go, but I would sure like to see a spreadsheet of what it's going to cost a residence, and after the surveys taken, that would give you the guidance of what the outcome is.
Yes. The money that we have, for example, the water department, people have already paid their taxes on it. Now, you're talking about the same thing, you could have fixed the roads little by little five, six, seven years ago. Take a little here, a little there, it would have been fixed like today. We wouldn't have this trouble today. That's, that's because there was no thinking. No thinking, no common sense. I think, I think we could do something with the idea that I have, but we don't know how to investigate it, we don't know how to do anything about that, we're not attempting to, if we should.
I think it's all the, the decision.
You're still not, people are all, everybody with everything they're saying.
But it's not one person's responsibility, it's the decision of this council actually to decide who's going to go after the roads.
Of course, but it's my responsibility to bring it forth.
Yeah, so we're going to make a decision, but not, no, it's not...
I don't expect you to vote for it.
No, I'm saying, what we're not going to do is place blame on people why the roads haven't been improved.
Maybe it's their fault, they're not thinking about it, and saying, how much does this city have in money?
No, we're going to, we're going to decide from this table moving forward. We're not going to point, give me this, we're not going to point blame at anybody, we're going to move forward.
What you call moving forward is going to increase the taxes in this city.
Well, we'll make a decision on that, we'll have a, we'll have a collective yes or no as to what we're going to do.
Well, over here, possible, it'll be a six to one.
Train people.
And I'm not going to vote, I'm not going to vote on this unless you examine...
No, if I don't, hold on, just one second.
Unless you examine the thought that I have. All right, can you do that?
Mr. Man, you're done with your comment. Mr. Tyler.
I wanted to just chime in and say that I totally support Don's suggestion, let's do a survey. Gather the data, along with the financial data, but see what people are willing to pay for. And you can get those surveys done for less than ten thousand, they're phone calling surveys, could be even cheaper than that, depending on who you hire and exactly what kind of a sample you're doing. But I would do a phone survey.
Why don't we have, it's right, everyone on council, they're not going to be, why don't we have Mr. Mitchell come up and tell us what happened? But I really believe, looking at the big picture, we're required as council to provide the residents and the businesses in this city, the businesses in this city, the best appearance and appearance of the roads. So I think it's something we have to consider, even though it may be an increase, and the fact is, when you move here, that's the cost of living south, that's why I'm... Let's go forward, Mr. Mitchell, tell us what you think.
Well, thank you very much, it's great to be back in Southfield again, it was just over three years ago that the city was more than eight out of ten voters approving and passed the operational millage for which we did work for Citizens Committee, as well as conducting a survey for the city. And I think we all drive around on, excuse me, our roads where I live and where you live, and I drive between here and Lansing all the time, and clearly we've got a problem. And I think, and I say this, I never recommend doing survey research unless I think it's important. I've gone to clients and they've asked me, you need to do a survey, and I've said no, or I've said wait another year to do this survey. We live in a democracy, and in a democracy, it is the majority that rules, it's the majority that selects people to be on this, on this council. I certainly work very closely with all of you. It was a great experience when I came here three years ago, to start meeting individually with all of council people to discuss doing an operational millage of two point nine mills for police and fire and for other purposes that was passed in twenty eleven. And I think that it's important, try to determine now whether or not the voters in your community think that there is a need for one of the three types of proposals that was discussed earlier by Mike McGee. And, you know, I would like to work with you on that, to see whether or not, once again, as there was in twenty eleven, there's support for improving the roads that we all drive on, and I drive through Southfield, often on the way downtown, or being in Southfield for other reasons. I'd be happy to discuss it or answer any questions that you may have regarding it.
First of all, Mr. Tyler, did you have a question?
Yeah, I'd just like to, so it's not left on the table, and I'm starting out, the city has not been negligent in any way in dealing with its roads. And, and, and I say it with respect, I mean, we paid a million dollars towards greenfields, the city got a city project, it's a county road. We paid for the Snowy Mobile Asher Road, ten mile road, and twelve mile road for the county, and we don't, really don't get the total amount of money that we spent. We did Easton Road, we did Franklin Road, we're doing Nine Mile Road, and I said, this is spent, isn't it? We're just doing, I know, I know, Sydney, no. What I want to say is... What I want to say is, is that, I mean, we differentiate between the county, state and local roads as well as our primary and secondary roads. You know, you have to put a little checklist of how the city did. And, and I don't want it to be said that the city hasn't done its job or been negligent in doing its job, because we've spent more money on our roads than the county or state has, because we have to pay a portion. We did last year road, I don't know, was it ten or twenty percent? The county road, yeah. Another ten percent of city money went into last year.
What you spent and what you've got are two different things.
Pardon?
What you spent and what you've got are two different things.
Yeah, but, see, you said water and sewer, we're doing section thirty-one, that's, that's almost six million dollars, six and a half million dollars that comes out of the water. You can't neglect the sewer and water by taking the money out of that fund to replace something else, because now you've got two trouble, problems. Anyways, I just wanted to straighten up that, that, I think we run a good financial ship.
Still a hundred million dollars there.
Okay.
Well, if we're going to do a survey, I still think an education program has to go before. I don't think just picking up the phone and calling people, because they're going to have a gut reaction without any knowledge. Um, everybody thinks we should, we Southfield should fix our roads unless it's coupled by state parks, you know, that's just before the meeting. They're not all our roads. People don't understand that. They really don't understand that. So, there has to be an education program before a survey, if we're going to do a survey, and I think it's not a bad idea, but there has to be an education program and a strong one with all the media. You know, our, our cable and everything that we can do, because people just don't understand who owns the roads, where the money comes from, what's causing the problem. We don't even understand that. So, if, if we want to be successful, we have to start with an education program.
But, but I understand education, people are still going to say, build Southfield roads, they're not going to fully understand which one belongs to the county, which belongs to the state. The roads are in Southfield and the Southfield roads are in Westfield. So, I don't think a full education on this road belongs to this jurisdiction, this belongs to this municipal.
It's not a big, I mean, you don't have to spend a lot of time on it, but people have to understand how much money we have, how big, they have to understand what it costs and who we pay for. It's, it's not going to be a big, long education program. It's just, I mean, I must have spent five minutes talking to these people, they, they got it, but they didn't know this. Like, why aren't we fixing the roads? Well, because we, you know, number one, we give up a lot of money, number two, they're not all ours, number three, we have to participate in all these other roads too. So, once they get it, I think, if we want to pass the millage, I think they have to have some understanding.
Madam, madam chair, can I just respond to that for just a moment? One of the things that we do in the survey, uh, is to, first thing that we do is to ask an unaided question without any information, would you support a millage of whatever amount it's going to be? And then we go through and we discuss what arguments people are going to make against it as well as what arguments are that might be in favor of it. And that's where you sort of gauge the understanding of whether or not people do, uh, know all this information. And so, what that tells you is, is there support? I mean, if there is not, and the reason you do a survey is to try to determine if there's insufficient support. I've done surveys from municipalities and come back and told them, no, your community doesn't want to at this point pass a millage for the purpose that you want. And they have not therefore moved forward with doing it. And so, it's, it's a, it's a great way to, to gauge public opinion and one of the things that happens during the actual, uh, survey itself is to provide information so that those people know what it is. And then, moving forward, if there's support, uh, an information program can be done. That's what we did, remember, uh, back in two thousand and eleven. We did a community survey and we found out that there was support for it and then we conducted an informational, uh, campaign, which, uh, once the people found out what the money was going to be used for, uh, eight in ten people supported it.
Well, whether it's like which comes first, the chicken or the egg, I believe that's you to decide, but the people do have to have some better understanding than they do now. I think you're going to look at that.
Absolutely.
Could you give us your cost, could you give us some timeframe on what it would take to have a survey, your assets completed, executed and some results coming back to the council?
The cost of the survey is dependent on, on two different factors. Number one, how long is the survey that we're going to use to conduct the survey? And secondly, how many people are we going to survey? So, what I can do is to provide, uh, Mr. Zorn and therefore to you later on, what some potential costs of that survey would be. But it would be dependent, as I was last time, on how many questions we ask and how many people that we survey.
In terms of timeframe, you would have it, you would have enough time to have it completed so that we can-
Oh, yeah.
-potentially get on the ballot for it.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. I mean, we do surveys very quickly if people need them done very, very quickly. We have that capacity, it all depends on moving and graphing back and forth and meeting with everybody and, and making sure that there's an agreement. Nothing is ever done until obviously you folks agree to it, so. So, the timeframe can be as, yes, we can get it done clearly for, uh, the November ballot so you can have information as to what matters you go on the November ballot. That's no problem, madam chair. For madam president, I don't know which I should call you. They both sound good.
Just don't call me late.
All right.
I had a question, I had a question. So, the issue of a special assessment versus a millage, if we only do a survey on the millage, how do we, how do we assess the viability of a special assessment?
The survey may touch on the special assessment. Uh, we know, for example, Brett, if I may, I'll-
Go ahead.
Briefly explain what Farmington Hills works. And, and just to give you, the example of someone with a fifty-foot lot would be in an assessment of ten thousand dollars over, uh, fifteen years and a thousand bucks a year with finance costs rolled in. But Brett, what does Farmington Hills do?
I, I believe Farmington Hills by, by charter, um, can only contribute up to a certain amount towards the local street improvement and so they have done all historic improvements on local street subdivisions through SAVs. And, and as comparison goes to a lot of communities, they have probably a more robust or well-planned special assessment district program. Recently here, they've been visiting the same question of road condition, um, and ironically in a major survey of their network, even though they've had dozens of SAVs over the last ten years, their local road network is still rated on average quite poor. I don't remember the number off the top of my head, but it's, it's in the four range. And one of the things that they've found is that, um, you know, there's certain neighborhoods that are more organized than others and so the neighborhood, as a community group can clearly successfully petition for an SAD, SAD, and others not so successfully. And so, even though the city will, it's, it's my understanding that they've never, council has never forced an SAD upon a neighborhood where even though the charter gives them the authority to be able to do that, they've always allowed the petition support to drive it. And there are, there are neighborhoods where despite, you know, four or five times of trying to petition, uh, for an SAD, they just can't get enough support. Um, so they're kind of weighing the same type of option, which is better. Um, a couple of, of observations that, that have been noted recently is, generally speaking, and if we go back a little bit to that pavement management discussion at the last meeting, it's more cost-effective on a road to do some interim improvements while the road's still in good shape. Usually you can't get an SAD to pass until it gets painful, until the neighborhood really feels the pain of a, of a really bad road. You know, then obviously the petition support starts to happen. And so, the downside of that is it ends up costing more over the long haul to, to do it in that fashion. So, that's one downside. And then the administrative cost of running that program neighborhood by neighborhood, petitioning it, holding some informational meetings to make sure people understand, because as has been pointed out, it's a, it's a complicated issue, road funding, and so you need to do some education. Um, and so that, that does add a little bit of administrative burden. Obviously the upside though is that it's, it's very democratic. If you're as many as, if you want it, vote for it. If you don't, then, so, I don't know if that helped answer your question.
And they're all about that, are they all?
Right.
Okay, and, and to go back to-
Go ahead, ma'am.
The other thing is, is there any viability, do you think, of saying, doing a millage just for residential streets? I mean, I, this is something I thought of with the council, do you see there as being anything that is an option? And I don't know, because you would have to look at the budget balance, would that help?
And I, we may need to take through some modeling, but I'm wondering if we can perhaps test some of that in the survey to see. I'm somewhat intrigued about if there is a citywide village and perhaps a percentage of that is rebated if you agree to take on your special assessments or, to, to do that. And that's what Farmington Hills does, you get a partial, that citywide village, you get part of that back. Am I correct, Gary?
Yeah, I, um, the, the normal share in an SAD, okay, in like Farmington Hills is, I think it's ten percent, it might be fifteen percent.
Do you know what Birmingham does?
Birmingham is a millage, okay, an overall millage.
And, and we could, we could, we could do some side-by-side comparisons and that might help us in guide putting together a good survey and the next, something we'll, I'll put it on our team that I think we can have ready in seven to ten days, so.
I just, I actually, the survey is important. I have a hundred percent trust in, uh, the ability of Mr. Mitchell on the firm, but as it, those other, when we do it, we only give one shot at the, at the survey and we should be clear of what we want them to look at as a matter of circumstance.
Just, just one follow-up is that in, in many townships, there's no participation if it's under the road commission. You, if you want your subdivision done, you pay a hundred percent of the cost as part of a special assessment. It's normally a ten to fifteen-year payoff, okay, but it's, the burden falls on all the adjacent property owners. And those, those assessments right now are those, uh, costs, depending on the size of the lot, can vary anywhere from about eight thousand dollars up to about fifteen thousand dollars, okay? And it's a hundred percent paid out over ten or fifteen years plus interest. So, some communities like to say, okay, we're going to give you an incentive in order to make that SAD happen, but they're, they're kind of limiting those to ten to fifteen percent. It's not a fifty-fifty or a sixty-forty or any of that type of magnitude of, of participation, okay?
So, at this point, council, we'll move forward with a consensus to conduct a survey with Mr. Zorn and his team directing the framework for the question. All right, let's start with you, Mr. Typer.
Yes.
Mr. Seymour.
Yes.
Mr. Fraser.
Yes.
Mr. Typer.
Yes.
Mr. Mark.
No.
Mr. Main. And I say, yes, so we'll move forward with the survey and you have captured what council has stated in addition to looking at the possibility of what's going on with the project.
Thank you.
Madam chair, thank you. All right. How does council on the roads?
I have a question. He's had a good survey for free. Do we have to do a little?
If it comes to time, the administrator can just-
He's going to ask questions.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, today. Next time when I give you Mr. Zorn's, the community development project action.
Madam President, um, the next item, this is, um, forty year of our county development project. We, uh, have an allocation of four hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars per street. The attachment is to propose breakdown. We're also proposing to reallocate three hundred thousand from our revolving loan. I have Rick Lampy, who you brought in to assist us in the development, uh, and we've outlined the projects. I think Mr. Lampy is passing out kind of a forty year history, but tonight we, we need to schedule on, on the regular, check on your consent, is to schedule a public hearing for June sixteenth. Um, you can see over twenty million dollars has come in from HUD over the forty year period of the program. The, uh, projects we're proposing, and, and let me just begin, council may recall the work you folks did back, uh, a year ago with the county and the home program. There is now effective July one, a hundred and forty thousand dollars sitting in Oakland County for Southfield residents who are income eligible for home improvement. So, that money, uh, what? Hundred and forty thousand. And previously those monies went to the state of Michigan and were dispersed statewide. We saw very little evidence of them getting back to Southfield. So, with the funds coming in and being administered by the Oakland County Home Program, they're now available for our residents. Uh, we still have money remaining in our ship, uh, account, a substantial number, which we are going through and do, uh, in the next five to sixteenth, we'll have that number down. We're going through a reconciliation of what's in our letter of credit with HUD and how much is, is available. Rick, it's another, at least another four hundred thousand?
Could be.
Pardon?
Could be a-
Yeah, okay. So, for next year, we're proposing, proposing a hundred and fifty thousand for our tour program. Uh, we're not proposing any new money to ship, rebuilding together, we're proposing an additional thirty thousand. We completed the rebuilding work together, uh, three weeks ago. Uh, that program leverages, uh, a lot of additional volunteer sweat. We worked on twelve locations. Uh, two Saturdays ago through the John Grace neighborhood, uh, lots of volunteers, it was, it was very touching to see it. Code enforcement, another thirty-five thousand, uh, for that program. They still have a substantial balance in their two thousand thirteen, fourteen budget. Uh, we just ordered a couple of new lawnmowers for the code enforcement. So, between the, they have roughly about twenty thousand left and additional thirty-five, there's more than enough money for code enforcement. We're proposing, uh, to put fifty-four thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars in historic preservation. The BURG HVAC system, I think the last meeting I made reference that I did a walkthrough with facilities and Parks and Rides and the BURG. We're taking a look at our heating and cooling systems. We had at the church a furnace below the pipe first and I'm learning that the furnace is over thirty-five years old in that facility. Uh, so we're proposing that some of these dollars go to upgrade our mechanical systems in, in those facilities as well as air conditioning. Uh, I'm also convinced that the energy savings will be substantial, uh, so that could be a good investment. ADA compliance, Americans with Disabilities Act compliance is knowledgeable activity. We're proposing three hundred thousand. Uh, we have an estimated, uh, one point seven million in ADA improvements we'd like to see on, uh, the campus here. We're proposing to, you know, initially do some start. Uh, part of that is, uh, we're thinking fifty thousand for the Miracle League, uh, program, uh, as they proposed to build their new professional stand. Uh, and then for the Thompson Farmhouse, um, an ADA restroom, uh, put on that facility, not on the house itself, but a freestanding shed-like structure that would replicate the architecture, that we would be able to secure the home and not have to stamp that house during the day. And, uh, we're, in the next few weeks, we hope to come in forward with about a forty-five thousand dollars in recommendations, uh, for improvements to the Thompson Farmhouse or some upgrades to preserve that property. Uh, the next item, uh, the-
You have code enforcement.
Yes, that's what I'm looking at, uh, that, yeah, and it should, if I can quick recheck my math before the next one, uh, it should only be on there once. Um, let me finish, we have twenty seventeen thousand, eight hundred for emergency relief, toss twenty-three thousand, Haven, or, or, I'm sorry, Southfield Youth Assistance, twenty thousand, seven fifty and seven fifty for Haven and seven fifty for Southfield Oakland Shelter. That's the total, uh, public services amount is sixty-two thousand, three hundred. Then we have for administration, twenty percent of the grant amount plus the fair housing for eighty-three thousand. Uh, plus the three hundred thousand. It should be four, uh, three fifteen plus four hundred thousand.
Three fifteen plus four hundred, yeah.
You don't have anything in for GPS, do you?
I've left my phone on, too. I apologize. Rick, you want to maybe pass out that other sheet while I'm doing the ciphering?
I know, I know, but that's when we have money to debate.
Right. I'm just checking it for the third time.
The Act needs community black market to build COVID streets.
What I would like to do is take the ADA compliance up to 305.
305?
Yep.
Be upping to 275?
From 275 to 305.
Drop, drop the code.
And drop in the code enforcement. Because they have over 20, code enforcement has over $20,000 in its account now, in its letter of credit. And that's after the two lawnmowers, and then another $35,000 for next year. And we pretty much, in order to spend some money down our letter of credit, we make sure we got our equipment, our shade, and... But we would, we propose to advertise this with the leading to $130,000 code enforcement, and changing the ADA compliance to 305.
Any questions, council?
When is this coming back? It's coming on the 16th. June 16th. Okay. The public hearing.
I do have a question. You're doing a lot of upgrading to a lot of buildings. Is changing from key lags to fobs, is that part of this upgrade?
And this, no, but we are, right now, we have a police department working on an overall budget. Twice a year, the Michigan Risk Authority will set grant proposals, and that's in eligible activity, security, cameras. So I've asked the police department for a conceptual campus-wide plan, kind of a backbone that we could incrementally move in, and key fobs would be part of it. I don't see key fobs being part of ADA, but what may become part of ADA might be replacing out more of the, we've still got round level, round knobs, instead of the lever knobs, for people who have issues with their hands, or, you know, do you usually use a lever knob? Just a thought, if there's a way to tie fobs to it, if, but I was thinking that we would begin submitting at least once a year to the Risk Authority grant request for cam, more cameras and fobs for this facility.
What is the plan for the Thompson Farmhouse?
Uh, the, we have, the reserve money's coming back for, that the foundation has been sitting there. I thought we really needed a little plan. I mean, it's one of those assets that we need to find a boost that's consistent with the donation that was made. This ADA compliance, the thought process is, is no, the current restrooms there are not ADA compliant. On the Evergreen Road, we've constructed a preferred tap-in, so we can give water and sewer to that. But we really need to get a game plan for Thompson Farm, Code House, Parks House. There's some, you know, there are four or five structures that we need a very clear vision, that we are somewhat hamstrung in the way the gift was given to the city. The $45,000 we're looking at improvements are painting, fence repair, and the, so repairs to the porch and the roof.
I'm trying to, an interest credit, the last meeting, we talked about the Community Foundation came up.
Yep.
Well, I went over there last week and to drop off some more money for the baseline project, some more donations. And Raquel told me that they will close out everything on June 30th. That they are not taking any more donations after May 31st, and then they will transfer everything by June 30th.
And, and if I may, I can, a future topic, because I've had conversations with, we've got over $1.2 million sitting in a trust account for the city. We have restrictions as a governmental entity as to the interest rate those months can earn. And I think we need to find a better way to put that money, to which I had a conversation with the Providence Community Foundation, and throughout, you know, some type of co-relationship with this foundation that can at least get us a better rate of return on our money. I mean, we're hamstrung by the government accounting rules that aren't letting us earn anything. That was the tough part of the Community Foundation, Southeastern, the Community Foundation for Southeastern Michigan wanted us to turn the entire amount over to them. We didn't think, we weren't comfortable with that, but I think there's got to be a way to get that, let that money at least earn a little bit more.
Okay, without any objections, we'll go on our...
And if I may, then, we have a council item prepared. I've been waiting for the money to come. I'd love to move that item forward at the June meeting. That way, we can start preparing to get the work done this summer. If the money comes in in June, and we're not taking any action on it till July, that means we're going to be, our backs will be up against the wall of July and August trying to get painting and roofing done, where if we could go in early June, we could be prepared to move and get it done in the first part of July.
So you want to move it up?
I'll move forward, it'll be June... Out, that item, I'll bring forward at the next regular meeting in June. Just, I've been sitting on it, waiting for the money to come, and as council and cyber says, it's not going to help by June 30th. But, you know, we'll let the item to say we know these months are going to come in at the end of June. Obviously, we won't pull any triggers, so we have the money.
Okay, let's move to the communications portion, Mr. Earl.
Not going to waste time. My address is on record, and you have it on my phone. I wanted to ask questions about the comment that Mr. Fred Zorn made about giving Ark and Jonah monies for Brownfield credit after the fact, and that the money would come from the millage, and that there is going to be an agreement to make the millage whole. Now, a resident from the city of Southfield shared some information with me, and it goes something like this. The authority has approved his request for assistance to capture taxes for 14 years for that St. Beast property. There's going to be a public hearing on June the 16th. He starts demolition tomorrow. So it almost sounds like you guys have given him the credit already, even though there's going to be a public hearing on June the 16th. Because why would a developer risk spending all that money for demolition if he didn't think he was going to get the credit? Now, the city will be entering into a donation agreement with the developer. The developer will make payments to the city of Southfield for the cost of police and fire for that location. Does the city have such a thing, a donation agreement? And if so, when and where did we get it from? Is it state? Is this council procedure and rule? You guys are making this up as you go, which basically shows that we lack leadership, innovativeness, creativity, and the ability to just think long-term. If you guys stop giving away tax abatements, you could fund these roads. You said here, for that millage, first paragraph, "The millage proposal strictly limits the city from spending any of the millage fund for general administration. Every dollar from the millage increase will be used for police, fire, EMS." You guys, how can you take millage money when it's already dedicated? Now, that's what you're going to need to explain to the people. You guys are making this up as you go along. I'm just concerned about the fact that you're going to use a fear tactic again to get another millage passed. Fear, false evidence appearing real. Whether they give to the millage, whether a millage is passed, these developers get police and fire anyway, just from having a business here. So I want to know which tax, tax dollars you're going to use to give this Brownfield credit. You should go to Lear and Denso, because Lear and Denso has made a ton of money on you. You guys pay Lear 5% on the money that you captured.
Yes, in fact.
Thank you.
My address is Post Office, Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037. Last year, on February 28, 2013, the COW council meeting that was scheduled for that evening was canceled earlier in the day. Under such circumstances, folks like myself, who had signed up for the communications portion of the agenda, are notified by phone of such cancellations by the city clerk's office. Sad to say, I was on the phone for much of that day, and I don't have call waiting. So the clerk's office had no way of notifying me. Finally, a determined clerk's office got ahold of me late in the day by phone. So that this problem doesn't repeat itself, I would like to recommend to this council that you insert in your request for recognition form a cell phone slot and an email slot, placed directly under the applicant's phone number slot, like I have inserted here on this form that I have in hand. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you.
All right, are there any other items to talk before the council, or this one? Seeing none, we'll call this meeting adjourned.